That this meeting has been duly called and that notice of this meeting has been posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act. Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. Section 1, and we will start with the roll call, section number two. So, Ms. Felicia Moody.
Here.
Ms. Debbie B. Gomez.
Here.
Mr. Sean Glovier.
Here.
Ms. Maria Douglas.
Here.
This Doc, ah, Ms. Maria Cruz Perez is on her way, she'll be here soon. And Darryl Owens is here, so we do have a quorum. And Mr. Esteban Serta is absent. And we do have a quorum, so we are good to go. First, it's going to be, section three would be public comments on agenda items. So, Dr. Douglas, if you'll take a look, see if anyone has signed up for any comments on our agenda items. Thank you, and no one has signed up for any comments on the agenda items. Okay, then we'll move to section number four, which is going to be our budget workshop. And Dr. G, I'll let you go ahead and take it from here.
All right, at this time, I'll have Ms. West come up and she will, uh, go through her presentation.
Do I just start going? Okay, I'm, I'm trying to see it up there. Good evening, so tonight I have the preliminary, somewhat preliminary, almost final, twenty-four, twenty-five budget. I will give, there are some updates that I have that are not, can you not hear me? Sorry, I'm usually loud. There's a few updates that are not in the presentation because we just got the certified values at, I think they emailed at like four-thirty today. So, but I did some quick numbering, so I can update that piece. So, first thing is our enrollment. As you can see, we are predicting to be flat. What the, what the projected enrollment is, is everybody that was here at the end of the year in twenty-three, twenty-four, we make the assumption that they are returning. That will not be the case, they will not all return, there'll be some that leave, but of course, there'll be a lot that come in as well. So, but based on just the projection of everyone rolling up, and there, there, there are a few new kids in here that are waiting to process, but they have been accepted, or they are in district, those are added in here, which is why the number is, is flat. But you can see each campus, and just remember on the early childhood center, they're going up so much because they're gaining first grade, and then you'll see Patterson and Delaney going down. And as I did the, before we even started looking at the projected numbers, I base the budget on a flat enrollment. Years ago, you could really project what your enrollment was going to be. Now, with the mobility of students, it's, it's, it's really a shot in the dark, and it, it is a true, it is a true guesstimate. So, as of right now, this, this is based on the preliminary values that they send out in June. So, this is what I said, we get, we get preliminary values in June, and then July twenty-fifth, they're required to send out the certified values, which I said is what we got today at like four-thirty. Usually get it the day before, but TAD is having a little, a lot of controversy there. So, as of right now, we will maintain the same tax rate. Are actually our certified values, so where the twenty-twenty-four preliminary values are, the actually, the certified values came in at seventy-nine million dollars higher than that two-two-one-five number, which is about a five-and-a-half percent increase from the twenty-three taxable values. Okay, but based on that, you know, we have the maximum compressed rate, where you plug in your values and you have to wait till you get your certified values before you can send it into the state, for the state to come back in and say, okay, now here's your M and O that you can adopt. Of course, you can always, I guess, adopt a lower M and O, that's an option. So, with the change in the values, our, that seventy-five, seventy-five cents of M and O went down point oh-oh-two-three cents, which doesn't make, will not make a big difference in revenue at all. So, our tax rate that we will actually come in August for you to vote on, once the, once TEA says yes, these values are good, they give you a template that you can do your maximum compressed rate template on, so that you kind of know as for, for budgeting purposes, but then you have to wait till TEA tells you, yes, that's good. But based on the template, our M and O tax rate will be at point seven-five-five-two with the certified values that just came in. Again, to get to this, I have to do a whole lot of other calculations, and I thought the difference is not big, so I'm just going to speak to the difference. And again, the twenty-twenty-four taxable values that you see on there, the two-two-one-five, those were preliminary, and the actuals came in seventy-nine million higher. And if you want those exact number, that exact number, I do have it, that I can give to you.
Go for it.
Okay.
I'm sorry, do we have this, I, cause I can't, I didn't find it. Do we have this?
It may not have been sent because this was still in the works. But I could, we can, I can make sure Ashley has it and send.
Thank you.
I was really hoping we would get the values yesterday, but they did not. So, the new, the certified twenty-twenty-four taxable value is two-two-nine-four, three-four-nine, five-seven-eight. Two, two, yeah, two-two-nine-four, three-four-nine, five-seven-eight.
And you said that's the taxable value?
That's the twenty-twenty-four certified taxable value, yes ma'am. Which is not going to affect what our M and O rate will be. I think that's two-hundredths of a penny is what it will affect. It, our projected tax collections will go up slightly because the values are higher, although our, it'll still be about the same because we're not dropping too much. And then our INS tax rate will work to maintain that thirty-eight cents, and I'll talk about that. So, that's a five-point-five-seven percent increase in taxable values between the years. Okay, so here is, based on the revenue that I had, again, it'll shift just a little bit with the certified value, but it, it won't shift much because if we get more tax, it's going to be less state, so it'll, it'll come out pretty much awash. So, the general operating, our projected deficit is seven-hundred-and-fifteen thousand dollars. Child nutrition will have a surplus of twelve-hundred dollars. And then debt service, we're looking at a surplus of three-point-six million. With the debt service, that is because we taxed at the thirty-eight cents, although we haven't drawn all that money down in the bonds. So, we're not paying out, we're, we're bringing in more than what we need to pay out. But I've talked with Hilltop Securities, who is the financial advisor, and I'm sending him the certified values, and then he'll go through it, and we'll prepare to pay off bonds early, some of the older bonds. And when you do that, you can keep your tax rate at thirty-eight cents. Although, based on what we have heard at TAD, I'm going to work with him to see how much can we stick in fund balance in the future in case we need it, depending on how, when they, how they've changed the values and that comes.
I'm going to give you a report on that, what your superintendent's report.
As far as the general operating goes, these expenditures, remember that ESAR, which I know it's a deficit, it's not as bad as a lot of districts, I don't know that that's, that matters, but ESAR ended, so we absorbed some of the ESAR expenditures, there was some payroll over there that we absorbed, the one-ninety-nine, the general operating absorbed that. Also, some of the things that were bought, the programs that were bought, the one-ninety-nine has to absorb that. We did lose, we did absorb about seven positions through attrition, but ESAR brought over about four to five positions.
So, with, excuse me, with the, the positions, those were ESAR positions?
There was, there was about four or five ESAR positions that moved over to the general operating.
So, we lost or we gained?
No.
No, the funding. They were funded through ESAR, and now they're funded through the general operating. So, we have to take that, take up that slide.
Okay. Are these couns, I'm just curious since you brought it up, these are counselors and?
It was.
MHMR?
Yeah, we had it written down, it was the.
Social workers.
Social worker, there was an intervention counselor.
Yes.
Ms. Duomo. There was somebody else, and then Shanna Mo, uh, Hector. Well, but it's still ESAR, so she, her grant ended as well, that'll come back to one-ninety-nine. Now, with the addition of instructional coaches, that's paid out of Title I money. So, that doesn't hit our one-ninety-nine, which is why we're able to do it. Y'all have any other questions? This is always a good thing to look at, this is by the function. You, years ago, you had to do an eighty-five percent test and a sixty-five percent test, you don't have to do that anymore, but I always like to look at this to make sure that instruction is the highest function paid. So, the very first line, the very first bar is in, that's direct instruction. Those are, those are employees that are, that are directly impacting students. Classroom teachers, main, well, all classroom teachers. So, this is a good thing, you always want to make sure that you're, you're heavier in the instruction and not in the others. Facilities maintenance and operations is a little higher, it's normally not quite that high, but that's the, the concession stand, that's some of the, some of the items that will move over into construction. So, that's, that's kind of inflated a little bit. And the other piece we want to look at is where, where's our money going? This is by object code, so as you can see, we separated out general operating and child nutrition. General operating has, so that's our one-ninety-nine, our general fund. Eighty percent goes to payroll, which is about where it should be. And then you can see the other slices of the pie. But as you know, businesses, it's, the bulk of your budget is payroll. And eighty percent's good. Child nutrition, they're at eighty-six percent, which is not out of line, a little higher, but it's not out of line. And we're watching those numbers, the ratio of those numbers as well, to make sure they're in line with what they should be based on benchmarking. That's all I have, that was short and sweet. Do y'all have any questions?
I like that last slide, you know, I'm, I'm much more of a visual type of person.
This, this one?
Yeah.
Yes.
So, and if you go back one more. Yeah, so, I, I, I like the fact that you have that there, but is there something that would show any one of these, like a positive and negative from last year, what, what's going up, what's going down?
Um, I, I can pull a report, uh, the one I, the one I pulled is, doesn't have all the, I can pull it by the function. I can compare it, what it was last year and what it was this year. It would probably be very similar.
I like the cool colors, so it helps me understand things better, so.
Yeah, I couldn't get this one in green, it just kept giving me the option of orange, but, yeah, I can, I'll compare the two. I can compare the year-to-year in, in both of them, and see where, what twenty-three, twenty-four looks like versus what twenty-four, twenty-five.
For me, that would be.
Yes, I'm happy to do that.
I can tell you that with inflation, our operating costs are going to go up, our insurance has gone up yet again, our,
Yes.
transportation costs with gasoline, fuel, low, Gold Star has gone up on their prices because of, of that, and hiring personnel. Our electricity rates are pretty locked in, and, you know, but there are things that have, have, have gone up. Commodities, you know, food and those things cost, of course, that's not necessarily in this projected budget, that would be in our.
That's in here, food cost.
Food cost is in here, sorry.
This, this includes one-ninety-nine, the general operating and child nutrition.
And Laurie, like you said, always does a good job of finding commodities in bulk and the other districts.
With the warehouse going in, it's only going to get better.
Yeah.
Yes.
But there are, like I said, our insurance rates, this is the second year of the rate in height, the rate hike, so that was, that was pretty, I think, two-hundred thousand.
Yes, and this is our last year of the hike.
We hope.
Next year, it'll just be a normal increase. But it's, it's pretty, I mean, it's, it's, it's a de, I mean, you never want to see a deficit, but at the, the state that we're in right now, it's, it's a decent budget. We had a finance meeting this morning, and we, we talked to them about, everybody just, we just have to buckle down, and I told them, I said, it's like when my mama used to get coupons, we're in the cu, we need to be clipping coupons right now until we get through this, and hopefully, the state will come through. I don't know, but right now, we just, and, and everybody has been supportive of some cuts that we, that you just have to, you have to make, and we need to watch our money, and, you know, PD you go to, maybe, maybe this is the year that you don't go to a conference, or you only go to one conference instead of two or three. So, it's just those little things that if everybody will help just a little bit, it'll make a difference in the end, is my hope.
I know you mentioned that some of these positions with ESAR, that were previously funded by ESAR are now absorbed through a different account. Are there other positions that were not moved over that were absolved, or?
Out of ESAR?
No, well, out of, to help with this deficit.
So, in the, just in the general operating budget, and I think Ms. Williams is going to do a staffing update as well, but we have seven positions that were absorbed. I know, we, what we start, what we've done this year is, look, TASB puts out a benchmark ratio, and they have where you plug in what your enrollment numbers are, and then it tells you, here's, here's the numbers that you should have. Like, here's how many administrators you should have on a, on a campus with this amount of enrollment. So, we've really focused in on that. It also looks at, I know Dr. Vu and her team have done a lot with the master schedules to see how can we, I don't want to say increase class size, but be more effective with that, where if you have a really small class, maybe, maybe that combines with something else. I thought you were waiting.
It's a flash.
It's a misstep.
I thought you were trying to get my attention.
But anyway, so we've, we've looked at all avenues, but what we're trying to do, and what I talked to them about this morning, is I want rhyme and reason for when we make decisions, and it goes even to the budget. So, I did a, I went back four years and looked at all the expenditures of the district based on what the enrollment was by campus to look like what a per pupil allocation is. That's how I'm used to doing a budget, so that's, it's a, it's a, it's a good tool to use, and it's not uncommon. So, I went back four years, see what the per pupil allocation, of course, COVID is in there, it kind of throws things off, and I did an average. And that's how I'm doing the campus and the depart, and the, not all departments, athletics, band, nurses, library, those kind of departments, and the campuses, that's the big one. So, that way, there is a rhyme and reason as to why you, why Delaney has X number of budget, and Patterson has this much. It's based on the enrollment. So, that way, if anybody ever traces back, I, I never want to, I never want it to be favoritism or viewed as anything else, but it, there's, there's just got to be rhyme and reason. So, that's the same thing with the TASB, the staffing ratio. That way, there's no feelings in, in any of it. It is, here's the numbers, here's where we can, here's where we can absorb. And the good thing is, is we're not at a place where we have to go in and do a RIF. That's, that's a good thing, there are, it's a reduction in force, there's a, some districts have to do that, and you have to file financial exigency. But what we're doing is, when someone leaves, every position is, do we need this position? Do we need to change this, just like the safety and security when Mr. Sproule left? We look at it, what is the need? Do we need this? We have to have the safety. What, what else can we do with this position to take care of another problem? So, every position is looked at, but we, we look at this TASB ratio, and we know that if we have someone leave, this is where, this is where we're overstaffed, this is where we could cut back.
Did those seven positions get moved somewhere else within the district, or those seven?
These are people that left and they weren't replaced. So, like if it was a, if it was a high school math teacher, and, and I don't, I don't know the specific positions, but say it's a high school math teacher, and when they did the master schedule, they kind of knew they had this hanging out there of, if this person leaves, or if, not this person, if we lose a math person, then we're, we're going to be able to absorb it and redistribute the kids, and we don't need to replace it. So, that's how we've gone at it. We haven't, we don't, like I said, we don't want to get into a RIF. It's just through attrition is how we will cut positions. And like most districts, when the, when the money was flowing, we, districts added positions to help, and people get used to those positions, but now that enrollment has declined, now we have to really start looking at, at numbers. But again, we base it on that, that TASB staffing benchmark, so that we can always come back to a rhyme and reason.
I'll back up for a second. So, back when we received the ESAR funds, we were very intentional not to put a lot of salaries and a lot of personnel into the ESAR funds for that reason, because we knew those funds would be going away. Now, there were certain things that when we found they were effective, and we needed to keep them moving forward, you know, especially with like the counseling and the social workers, that was one of the things our campus administrators, when they came to us, said, we need to keep these positions, we did that, we just rolled them over into the general fund.
I was just curious, because I know we made a really big to-do back in May-ish, when we approved the raises and all of that, that we were saying, and we are not going to, we are going to be the district that doesn't have to cut positions.
Right.
So, now, I don't, yeah, so I just wanted to ask more about that.
And I think we still are that district, we're just, we're just, when we lose them, it'll be through attrition. Instead of like Arlington came in and laid off two-hundred-and-something people, we're not, we're not doing that. But if, if, if I, if I choose to leave and resign, I would hope my position would be looked at and go, do we need this? How do we need to change it? Maybe we don't need it, and so then it's not replaced.
And, and if we have like a position on one campus, you saw the numbers earlier on the presentation, if we have more numbers at one campus, and we have a need of our teacher over here, but we don't have the need over here, then we have moved those teachers to another campus.
And I'll say, Ms. Williams has really taken a hold of this, this staffing ratio. She's pulled in, the next thing we're going to work on is custodial, to make sure, is it square footage? It's a whole other, it's a whole other thing, but to make sure that we're staffed appropriately. But she's really worked on this to look at even down to sped paras. I mean, every, every, every category kind of has a benchmark, different categories, so she's really worked hard to keep that up, to see, so as people resign, she can look at that and go, oh, remember, we had, we had an extra over here, let's not replace that right now. Now, the one thing I did tell the principals is that just because, just because that math teacher is not replaced for, right now, if we get an influx of kids, that position's going to have to come back. So, just because we, we lose it through attrition does not mean we never see it again. And I want to make sure that they understand that, that it's, it is not a, once it's gone, it's gone, it's just, we don't need it right now, but if the, if the numbers increase and warrants that position coming back, absolutely, then we add it back. But we have to be good stewards of the dollars that, that we are receiving.
So, you said, if you looked at the numbers, and it, this question applies to the budget because it applies to money, and what Ms. Ms. Debbie said about funds, and people not being renewed, and we're doing all this with positions. When you look at how many kids are in the classroom, like elementary is kind of set, it's twenty-two to one.
Yes.
But for the high school, for the junior high, they can have pretty big classes, so is that?
And they can have small classes.
Yes.
So, the, so the secondary is very different, and that's where Dr. Vu and her team have really looked, I think she's, she has set some guidelines of at least.
Right now, the average class size in junior high and high school is lower than the average class size in elementary. I have an email with classes at one of our campuses that have eleven, ten, twelve, and so I need to have a talk with the principal about how are we going to consolidate, because we have another campus that may need an extra math teacher.
And, and the secondary campuses, you're going to have, like in the high school, you offer trigonometry, that's going to be, that, that may be less than the, the goal is fifteen, I believe it's fifteen in a class at the secondary levels?
Fifteen, that's the minimum. That's the minimum, we're going for an average of twenty-five.
Yeah, but the minimum's fifteen, but if you offer trigonometry, you only, you may only have ten, you may have less than that. But is that a, that's not, I don't know that that's a program you want to cut, because you, that's an advanced level class that you want to service those kids. So, there, there will be, the secondary, yeah, you're right, the secondary is very hard. It's not just a cookie cutter, oh, twenty-two to one, this is easy. It's been a lot of, and even a master schedule, it's a puzzle to put together, but it's how can we maximize, and can we combine this, and? But I also have told the principals is that as we're cutting things in the budget, it can never be to the detriment of the students.
So, that, that, that's been another issue, is that at the secondary level, being able to offer all the things that kids want to be able to do, and having the availability and the schedule to be able to do that, but sometimes, because of that, you, you may have some bigger classes here, and you may have some smaller classes here because of the scheduling, the way that works out. So, it's not a perfect science. I will say, it's, it's been a very, you know, arduous, ongoing thing that we've been working towards, trying to, trying to hone in as we, as we move forward with this.
And it's also shifting some responsibilities of, you know, like a, a front office. You may, you may have to shift who does what, and let, and that's always a good idea to kind of realign, to make it, what, what's the most efficient line of duties, if that makes sense? Yes, sir.
Along with this, while we're kind of doing the realigning and watching the numbers and the staffing patterns, I get what you're saying about the classroom sizes. So, our minimum that we've got is probably fifteen, the average that we're going for is twenty-five. Do we have a max number in mind, not that we wouldn't want to get above just two classes?
We haven't given a number, but in general, like thirty-three. But like PE is different, so that's why we don't have a set, because band is different, PE is different, it just.
Athletics.
We also have, like for our accelerated learning classes, the minimum is lower, for our EB classes, the minimum is lower, for our special education resource classes. So, so we have these guidelines, but I share with the principals, if there's a problem, if there's a question, call me. So, Mr. Pagel did a great job, he called jazz band, do we want jazz band? Yes, we do, there aren't fifteen kids in it, but we want to continue to build the program. And like Ms. West said, for trigonometry, we're not going to cut it, but we might not have four periods of, we might have two periods, just so that we're still offering a course without offering a course with three kids in it.
But ninth grade Algebra I should be maxed out, because that's a, that's a class that the majority of the ninth graders would take if they didn't do it.
And that max number would be like thirty?
Twenty-five.
The average is twenty-five, thirty, whenever I look at, pull the class numbers, and there's more than thirty-three, I'll have a conversation with the council.
And that's where you look at it, it may say thirty-three, but then by the time you get to the first day of school, and second day of school, third day of school, we may be able to level some of those classes out and readjust the schedule.
We also look at drop rate, what's the drop rate percentage wise for the last three years? Well, if it's ten percent, then we're not going to worry about it.
How many people are going to drop an advanced academics class because they got it in the first two weeks, and so that's hard, you know?
So, it's not a cookie cutter, this is the way it is. It's a, here's some parameters, and then let's try to work within this, and ask questions, and arrange it.
I do have a question, because he brought up counselors and scheduling, and I don't, I've never been in high school, but I know it's a nightmare in junior and high, so as far as scheduling goes. So, you said you had, y'all had this meeting this morning about money. So, all of this is done, the schedule is made, and you're not changing anything, adding anybody, or it's?
No, they've been working on math, two different.
We've been working on master schedules since January.
Okay.
We've had people looking to the principal, we've brought in people for grade eleven to look at it, to help advise, and, I mean, they don't know anybody from anybody, so, you know, they really are just looking at numbers. The master schedules were due for the principals on July fifteenth.
Okay.
So, what I've been looking at is, I've been pulling class numbers, I've been comparing and making sure, we have a list of guidelines, just double checking, making sure they all go with, they align with the guidelines. They're very close to set.
Well, I just know it's a, when I talk to people that I know that are in high school, they hate it, the counselors hate it. And having to consolidate, if you have to do it at the last minute?
No, this has been.
The teachers hate it.
Yeah, this has been an ongoing conversation, the principal might hate it too.
Just on that too, also, we just did our teams roll up yesterday, so our course counts and all those only reflect the kids that were in Canada all the time. Our, our counselors are also doing new student registrations, which seem to be fairly strong, and so, we, we, they have not been able to even enter those kids into the system to go into our course count, so there's a lot going.
Yeah, I know, that's why I never did secondary, but I hear them talking about it, so, since it was brought up, I just wanted to. Yeah, I know. That's why I never did secondary. But I hear them talking about it. So since it was brought up, I just wanted to ask if.
Yeah, the meeting this morning was just an overview of final purchase orders, reminders.
Oh, okay.
That kind of thing. I just briefly talked about, because we have been talking about the deficit budget, a deficit budget. We all need to be mindful of this. That has been an ongoing discussion.
Okay.
Not just in the news, but in all of our meetings. And this morning, it was just discussed again, but it was, it was like purchase orders, that kind of thing, what does that mean?
Procedures.
Procedures, yes.
Something that I want you all to know that is not typical, and if you have any idea what schools are like, at both our junior high and our high school, all but I think one of our teachers that didn't work out with coaching have not, they have conference period and they have P L C period. So 90 minutes minimum a day with an average of 25, below 25, but the set average of 25 in the classes. So we have smaller classes than normal and our teachers get this extra period to plan and prepare and conference. So if you've not been anywhere else, that may seem like a given, but having taught in other places, it's, it's, that's amazing. It's a life-changing experience for a teacher. And so I do want to highlight that. Yes, we're consolidating or making sure that we're being good stewards of the funds. And also we're trying to take care of our teachers.
In our academic plan, which we're going to be discussing at the next meeting, but the typical point is that P L Cs, you know, and dedicating time to those P L Cs are important. And we have brought in instructional coaches this year to help with those P L Cs to sit there and help our administrators run that, because they do get bogged down in other things. But having that instructional coach in those P L Cs with those teachers every, every week, that's going to be to, to, I think, a vast majority of our administrators, very, very impactful. So.
I think if we take the time to have P L Cs, if we're going to carve that time out of the day, I think we just have to pursue it with fidelity. You know, car, taking time out of those P L Cs to put people as substitutes elsewhere is not ideal, not ideal.
And also another impact on the budget that I've forgotten about, and I think Ms. Williams may touch on this as well. But with the, the teachers that we lost, the ones that, that we replaced them with are tenured teachers. I think the, the majority of them have over 15 years' experience with some at like 20 years. So that's an impact on the budget when you replace a, a five-year teacher. That's a big, but you're also getting all that experience too. So that's.
And we go back to May. We, you all made a decision in May to sit there and give raises despite the fact that you knew that we were going to be facing deficit budget. And so, you know, this is where we are.
You got to.
Which is a good thing because we're, we were, you know, U E A puts out all their stuff. So, and with us being lower, there are several districts that did not give increases. Now, some teachers got just a step, but the districts didn't do increases. So that's going to, that's going to push us up to where the others are going to have to be catching up in the next year or two. Well, if we just stay steady, then we'll just keep moving and not have to play catch-up.
Yeah, I, I think I've, I've had conversations, like we've all talked about that. And I don't think anybody is angry that we made that decision. We're quite, quite pleased that we did.
Stand by that still. Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's.
I think we got positive feedback in that, specifically because in years where, in a year where no, a lot of districts are not, we committed to it. So, yeah.
I think that's why we're doing the right move now.
I've been in a district where you have to play catch-up and it is costly, very expensive.
And I would go back to pie charts that she likes so much, you know, 80%. We're, we're hanging right, you know, I, I said, if we start getting above 85%, then that's not good, you know? And so the fact that we're maintaining, I think last year we were 82%, we're about 80% this year. So we're, we're holding in there. It's just, you know, without the state increasing revenue to us, then that becomes problematic.
Well, I think we'll have some conversations a bit later about decisions that the, that. Terran prison district.
Yeah.
Decided, but that, that could impact us, but I'm sure we'll, we'll have an upcoming conversation about that. Right? Okay. Right. Any additional questions for Ms. West? None to the left, none to the right?
And then we'll get this target point out to you guys.
Thank you.
Yes, I'll, I'll email it to Ashley tonight.
Add on it because of the.
And when I come back in August, I'll have, everything will be firm. I tell Dr. G I'm going to start going into whittling because I have whittled this budget and whittled just trying to, you know, there's, there's some low-hanging fruit that you get to, to, to help the bottom line. So. But you'll have better numbers, but I'll send this to Ashley tonight.
Okay, thank you.
Go back to, you know, we have our tax survey for the state that we have to send back, which is what the T E A bases their decisions off of what our M and O should be based off the values that they have and the values that they're seeing. So we really don't set the M and O rate. The only thing we really set is the I and S rate, you know? Yes, you have to vote on it and yes, but it's pretty much set by the state of Texas, you know? They're going to give you the lower one, but with no revenue coming in, extra revenue coming in from the state, everybody's going to have to adopt that higher M and O rate, you know? So just prep that for your, for your.
Sorry, one more technical question that I was asked. When we're looking at the taxable value numbers, right? Are those numbers the ones that were initially sent out to all of us that we were assessed? Or a lot of people have protested with taxes and gotten different numbers? Are they looking at those tax protest numbers? Are they looking at the initial?
So the, the way you get your certified values, in a packet. And it's, I don't know, 40 page, 30, 45, 30 pages. And they give you all these different values and they all have something different. So the one that I always go by is that it includes pending protest. But then you all, but when you get down to, okay, so what is my, what's my tax revenue? Like what are we going to get in our bank account? Then you have to take out some frozen, you have to take out, there's tax ceilings. You have to take, this packet, you pull all different numbers from this packet and then it says, oh, okay, this is what you can tax them. But when you compare, to compare year to year, I always use this number so that I'm looking at apples to apples. But yes, this, the number that I use includes pending, they call it A R B accounts. And incompletes and in process accounts. So that's, that includes what they think it's going to come out to be.
Okay, gotcha. And then I know I think districts generally have an attorney, so this may not be the right question to ask for you, but an attorney is always working on collecting delinquent taxes.
Yes, we have one.
Yeah. So do we have like the numbers of how much they've collected in previous years to kind of see, are we, are we staying in line with that? Are they?
Oh, our, our collection is at like 90, 98%?
Right, that's our collection, but then they go back and get the delinquent. They send out a, I don't know if it's a quarterly report, they send something out. So I'll see when I have the last one or I'll ask them to send it and I can, I'll send that to Dr. G for you all. But that gives you a status of, of how they're working on your behalf.
In my conversation with them, they, they have a very successful collection rate. What my conversation with them, but we collected a very high rate to begin with, like 97, 98%, something like that.
Yeah, I think.
So it's a very small percentage that they're actually going out and collecting, but off of that, they.
But that's how they get.
But I don't know exactly what it is.
Based on their collection. So we have a little moneypenger.
Right.
So then does that money that they collect help us as a district?
Yes, it comes through our, it comes through the taxing office as a, as delinquent taxes. So it's like they, it's like they're the collection agency. And then they keep a fee and then, and then the rest of it comes through the appraisal, the Wendy Burgess office.
Don't quote me, but I, I remember, I think I remember something like 47 million in collections last year.
Is that pretty consistent year to year as you call?
Well, it depends on.
Yeah, it depends on what's owed, just what the delinquent numbers are.
Right. I'll get that information.
Okay.
All right. Any additional questions?
Not right now.
All good? All right. Thank you, Ms. West.
Thank you.
All right. So Ms. West's presentation's been completed. All the questions to her have been exhausted. And we have another meeting that begins at 7 o'clock. So, Mr. Glavier.
Mr. President, I adjourn to, I'm moved to adjourn this meeting and wait for 19 minutes.
This meeting is adjourned.